Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have a report out of a closed session.
No action was taken.
Before we adopt the agenda, we received a letter from the county giving us a positive They gave us recommendations, and those recommendations require us to be proactive in dealing with the $10.2 million deficit. There's many reasons for the $10.2 million deficit, but one of the main reasons is the federal money has been withheld from Rialto Unified School District and other districts. And it is fair to say that some districts who don't take federal funds don't have to deal with these issues. And Rialto Unified School District chose to accept federal funds because they create jobs. And we see a sea of blue tonight. We understand. And there's a lot in this report, but there is a reality that if this report is not positive, everybody loses at this district, including the children. And as difficult as it is at this time, when you see somebody that you know and their name is on a list, again, emphasis is being placed that we empathize with you, and we'll do everything within our power to find ways to rectify the situation. Any comments from the boards this time before we adopt the agenda? Any board members?
I'd just like to read the highlights of that same report, and it should be available to the public on the website tomorrow. The highlight on page one, 2012 13-second interim financial report, positive certification. Page three, the district fiscally insolvent if the $10.2 million of budget reductions is not achieved. Then it goes on to multi-year projections. However, the district has incorporated $10.2 million in budget reductions that were approved by resolution of the governing board on February 27, 2013, in the projections for the two subsequent fiscal years. Key point, without these reductions, the district would be fiscally insolvent in the 2014 and 15 fiscal year. The county office recommends that the district continue to be proactive by developing contingency plans in response to the current state's economy's potential for further changes to the governor's 2013-14 January budget proposals. Thank you, Mr. President.
No further comments? Do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
Dr. Ayala, I just wanted to give you, we received a call from Ms. Gilbert today. She had an emergency in her family and had to leave the state, and she had asked that the item J5, if it could be voted on with the full board. She just asked that you consider it.
J5. I think time sensitive. We're okay with this. Are there any objections to tabling J5 based on the request that we vote on this when Ms. Gilbert returns?
I think we have four out of five. We have enough board members for a quorum. I don't see why we shouldn't proceed.
I agree.
Comments?
I would also like to hold off at member Gilbert's request.
And I respect that also. So we have two-two. So, Dr. Seaborn, we have a two-two here on holding off.
I'll just pass on the request. It should be.
Right. Okay, so I guess we can't go any farther on this. Okay, other than J5, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So move.
I want to accept it with J5.
Yeah. Okay. I move that we accept the agenda as written.
As written, we'll probably end up deadlock on J5, but you know, that's your prerogative. I mean, we could bring Ms. Gilbert back and vote on it.
The problem is if we're deadlocked, we may not be able to bring it back right away.
Well, I think we deserve an opportunity to discuss it, you know, and then make a decision after discussion. The premature, you know, consideration is unfair to the people in the audience, to this community, to our employees.
She would like to be part of that discussion, to my understanding.
I don't, I can't comment on why Ms. Gilbert is here or not here. All I can say is that we were all elected to represent our positions as board members in the best interest of the constituency, the community, and you know, we have emergencies sometimes, and I don't have anything against that, but we have four board members here, and all it takes to approve or disapprove anything is three votes, and with four board members, I think we have plenty for a quorum.
Ms. O'Kelly, any other comments?
No.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the agenda as written?
So move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
And I have a no too, because I'm requesting J5 be suspended, tabled.
Agreed.
So, we haven't adopted the agenda. We don't have a...
We can't move forward.
Okay. Who's our parliamentarian here?
There's no meeting. There's no meeting if the agenda's not...
Correct. Well, if I'm correct, maybe we should call for the question. The original request by Dr. Seaborn was that Ms. Gilbert requested to you to tell the board.
She asked me to pass information on to the board, but I spoke to Mr. Ayala earlier about her request, and he asked that I make the statement that she made to all of you. I didn't make the statement. It was her request.
And so the request was to postpone item?
J5.
J5.
Till she returns.
And can we clarify that for the public?
Sure.
The agenda item?
J5 is a discussion action item, and it is to approve and authorize staff to proceed with a request for proposal, RFP, to audit firms to conduct a special audit as requested by board members.
And so the motion was to postpone this for, and we took a vote?
Could be the next board meeting.
And we took a vote for that?
Last time?
No, just now. Am I correct?
Well, we took a vote to accept the agenda as written.
Didn't we take a vote to postpone this item?
No. Accept, adopt the agenda.
That came after. That came after.
The vote was two-two to accept the agenda.
The vote was two-two to not accept first this item to be postponed. Then, when we came to vote for the agenda, that vote was also two-two.
Two-two.
So for clarification purposes, I wanted that the public know what item we're discussing.
Right, and that's fair. I just read it. Now, we can revisit and perhaps revote to accept the agenda and move forward with our meeting. I would highly recommend that we accept the agenda and table J5.
Second.
All in favor? We're going to hold everybody up?
Why would it be us that would have to change our mind?
It doesn't have to be.
You could, if you adopt the agenda, you just vote on J5.
Yeah.
If you're not going to, if you're not going to hold it off.
Thank you, Doc.
Then let's vote on J5 separately. We okay with that?
Well, you're supposed to vote on every discussion action item separately.
Okay, so let me reread this. We're going to adopt the agenda. We have a motion already. We have a second, and we're going to vote on J5 separately. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. We do have a meeting. Next, we have, and we have presentation superintendent's report.
Dr. Levine.
Good evening, Board. I'm reporting on behalf of Andy Luna, Director of Special Programs regarding the Step Up Program and its financial update. So since 9/8 through 3/9, we have recovered, we've had 21 step-up sessions. We've recovered 28,397 absences for a total recovered amount of $1,101,234. And how that breaks down is our expenses out of that were $264,892, and then the district and the schools each get part. The district got $398,171, and the amount back to the schools that they can use in their budget for any purpose is $438,171, and that adds up to over the $1 million that I said before. So we're doing very well in attendance recovery, which means that students are learning on the weekends and making up what they missed for absences during the week. At the same time, the district's recouping the ADA, and the schools and the district are benefiting.
I think that deserves an applause.
That's great. That's awesome. Can we get a copy of that? When you guys get a chance?
Surely.
Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing. Comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak to any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation.
Yes.
James Sigmund.
Not. Yeah. I was just here to say, my name is James Sigmund. My position is a Maintenance I worker. My work affects the children's safety. We repair everything from the desk to the lights to maintain a safe classroom. That's all I have to say.
Next, we have comments on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak to any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation.
Okay. Sherry Ragland.
I am the Electronics Technician 2A that is on the list. I am the only person in the district who works on the security alarms at all of the schools. I was the one who put motion detectors on top of the roofs behind the portables. I've contacted all of the portables to ensure there's no longer any vandalizations on the air conditioning units, because for the last two, three years, they've been vandalized and has cost the district hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I've been staying on top of that. And so far this year, knock on wood, we haven't had any problems. And I just want to make sure the children are able to have air conditioning in their classrooms.
Samuel. Samuel Mendez.
I have a little speech. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Seaborn and community members. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of concerned members of the community and classified employees of the district. We are all aware of the financial crisis that California has been experiencing. We understand that budgets must be balanced and ways, the budget must be balanced and ways to continue to provide the same excellent service with fewer resources is a challenge. In doing these priorities must be, in doing these, priorities must be evaluated and decisions made, in my opinion, and that of many of my colleagues. This is where Rialto has failed. We are people-oriented business. People are who we serve, and people make the difference in children's lives. Yet, it seems that the priorities of the district are projects, not people. Project Social Office renovation, building additional bathroom, where sufficient facilities exist, unnecessary office moves, and many more. Most of these projects cost over $50,000 and have zero impact on education of students. $50,000 pay the salary and benefit for instructional aid in the classroom to assist students. That's our priority. Understanding, $15,000 pay for two additional noon duties aid to assist in providing a safe campus. $15,000, when multiplied by several projects, provide a full-time support person in security, maintenance, or IT to keep our school providing the highest level of service to our students. As a community member whose children attend Rialto School and as an employee of the district, I ask that the board carefully consider where our cuts are being made and equally pass expenditure to ensure that we are placing our priorities in our resources where they belong. We, the people who provide the service to our students, not the projects that simply drain our increasingly dismissing resources. And to closure, Mr. Ayala remembered me, and I want to close with this. Remember what I told you when you came to our board and our union? I said the same thing that you mentioned to the Speaker of the House when you came. You told the Speaker of the House, make it real. And I made you a promise that I will challenge you as a board member if we re-elected you and as a community member to make it real. In this crisis, in this moment that we are living, we have to do something. Somebody mentioned that they want to do an audit in the district. Vote yes on that and give us the opportunity to better our district.
Alisa Williams.
Hi, my name is Alisa Williams. I am currently an Information Technology Technician III. I currently provide service to BMS Elementary, Trap Elementary, Fitzgerald Elementary, Cold Middle School, and Carter High School. As a technician, I work to keep both computers and internet-based programs accessible to students and staff at schools and support sites. I have continued my college professional education. I've always gone the extra mile working to expand my knowledge and new additional programs to improve the school site experience and service for our district students and staff. Few examples of extra specialized jobs that I do are I create specialized scripts for software and software-saving times online for faster, easier use by students and staff. I customize software that is no longer covered by warranty, saving the sites of cost of upgrades or switching software unnecessary. For example, the ID badge systems, grading programs, A-plus program, and other lab-based programs that the students are currently using. I was instrumental in creation of the light touch server, which is going to replace our outsource imaging system, which we use to deploy our newer systems, Windows 7, Windows 8, all the applications, and currently that does not costing anything to the district. So it's saving the district cost of buying new outsource imaging system. I perform constant repairs on outdated computers, establish students access computer-based programs, internet without the expense of replacing these older machines. Currently upgrading memory and sites so we're ready for Common Core. I assist teachers and staff with extra help with the new software and programs, and I thank the board for the consideration and for allowing me to continue serving our schools and students and staff.
Mary Wilson.
Good evening. My name is Mary Wilson. I work in the garage. The garage is located in the M&amp;O yard. I have five mechanics and me. We keep the buses running. We keep the white fleet running. I also work with the city. I have to make the keys so they can get gas for the seat. In the gas station, we have a contract with the city to use our gas station. So they need keys to operate their gas station, and I'm in charge of making the keys. I'm on this list. My position is on this list. It's very difficult. What are these five mechanics going to do without me? I take care of everything. I take care of the budget. I take care of the gas station. I take care of the regenerators. I do it all. I make sure that the gas is filled every day. Well, you know, every two weeks, I get a load of gas. I have a Viterut machine in the office. The Viterut machine tells you exactly what's going on underground with the gas station. I check it twice a day. If there's an alarm, I have to call. Every alarm has to be answered. It's by law. Most of the stuff with the gas station is by law. I have three inspections from, oh dear. I have three inspections from San Bernardino County Fire comes one time a year, and AQMD comes, and I have to take care of all that and provide inspection of all my paperwork in the office. So maybe you can reconsider. I'd love it if you would reconsider. My position, did I tell you what my position is called? Transportation Garage Support Assistant. That's what they call me. Thank you very much.
Richard Lindberg.
My name is Richard Lindberg. I'm the Computer Programmer Analyst on the layoff list. I work on the ADA programs. I make sure that the data is correct so that the parent link system works, so when we call out to parents for absences and other announcements works. Basically, I help to make sure that the system works the way we're expecting it to work.
Brian Thomas.
My name's Brian Thomas. I'm a Maintenance III carpenter. I'm heavily involved in the repair and maintenance of the exterior of the buildings and the appearance of the campuses at the school district. With the Williams Law and your enrollment down, I think the appearance of your district does matter to the parents, and I think it would have an ultimate effect with your enrollment. I've been with you guys for eight years, and I've been proud to be a Rialto Unified School District. I've had opportunities to work with high school athletics, and I do wish the board would reconsider this, and there must be another way. There's families being drastically affected this, mine for one, everybody in the room.
Ronaldo Gutierrez.
My name's Ronaldo Gutierrez. I'm a Maintenance III plumber, Rialto Unified School District, for going on nine years. Been married to my wife, Michelle Gutierrez. Graduated Eisenhower for 25 years. You know, I, we're parents of three proud daughters. They've all come through the school district. My oldest niece, Gutierrez, graduated from Carter High School, went on to graduate from Cal State Fullerton. She played water polo there. She got her bachelor's in advertising. She now lives in Culver City and works in Los Angeles, working in advertising. My middle daughter graduated from Carter High School. She's a sophomore at EC Santa Barbara. She's doing great. She volunteers at the Time Warner Sea Center in Santa Barbara and also just got hired on as a volunteer at the reef. It's an aquarium on campus. My third daughter is a third grader at Kodiak, and she just got straight A's, so she's doing awesome. She's like hitting that level that I always knew she would, and I want her to follow the footsteps of her older girls, you know. Me and my wife didn't go to college, but because of the school district and environment that it's been for the last few years, they've been able to take advantage of that from top to bottom, you know, and I have three girls that have the opportunity that are going to do that, you know, and I feel like we're only as strong as our weakest link. And when we cut so deep into maintenance, you're going to affect the environment that was so helpful to my daughters. They got my daughters through the school district, despite what people say about Rialto, not in front of me. You know, my daughter's successful, and when you cut so deep, it's going to affect the environment that helped my daughters through the school district, especially when you cut maintenance. I mean, but from the teachers, you know, for the nutrition workers that feed them, to the bus drivers that get them to school and back home, to the custodians, and to my fellow maintenance workers. You know, we maintain those schools and keep those things running, and if you want that to keep going, then that's going to be affected when you cut so deep. I'm one of three plumbers, and you know, we're all valuable to this district, and my children are proof of that. You know, I can stand before you and say they've excelled in this school district because the environment that's been here for the past few years, since I've been here since 2005. And now you all kind of want to change that from the maintenance level. That's going to affect the response times to jobs and raw sewage on the floor that your kids are going to be walking through. I mean, I could bring you in pictures that'll make a lot of you guys just, I mean, you're going to turn your head. I mean, you got to have maintenance there to keep the schools running. It's not just teachers. It's not just y'all. It's us. It's a group, you know, the cooperative effort that makes that happen. You know, our very, Signa is a bridge, you know, that's going from one boundary to another boundary, you know. So let's respect what we got there and figure a way to get across that, and let's not pass this. You know, let's keep going where we're going and keep that going, and let's not affect what we have. So thank you for your time, and thank you to my fellow...
Lizette Escobido. Lizette Escobedo.
Hello, my name is Lizette Escobedo, and this is Barbara Darmo. She's my partner. We both are attendance liaisons at Eisenhower High School, and we work with students through contracts, meetings, and home visits. We take the daily calls from parents, saying, "My student is refusing to come to school," and we'll go out there and find out either what's going on. And most of the time, we bring the students in. So we really, I mean, we do a lot for our students and our parents. We also spend every Friday morning about three to four hours recruiting just for step up. We go out to every home with the highest number of attendance, and we'll invite the parents and the students to come to step up. We also volunteer with the Rialto Police Department for Pride Platoon, for boot camp, and we're there every Saturday morning with the students. We actually received an award from the Police Department for Volunteers of the Year. So everybody here that has worked at a high school or is working at a high school, or any school for that matter, knows that it's getting harder and harder to get students motivated and to school every single day. So every resource is greatly needed. Thank you.
Wendy Peckinpah.
That's Peckinpah.
Peckinpah, okay. I can't catch that.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Peckinpah. I have been with the district for three years. I am a grounds worker one, and I am very proud of the work that I do. My position is on the layoff list. The elimination of my position will have a great impact on the kids. You have all heard of the Williams Act. The elimination of my position will have a direct effect on work being performed on the Williams Act. The Williams Act will suffer if any position is eliminated. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Cheryl Decker. Ed Chisson.
We may have a problem here because I was going to speak on the audit, and you've moved it to not an agenda item, right?
No.
It's a good? Okay, we're good to go? Okay. My name is Edward Chissonis. I'm from CSEA. With me is Cheryl Decker, our chapter president. And good evening, board. Okay. From our collective CSEA classified employees, our chapter president, Cheryl Decker, and our E-board, we are all in support of the board members Montez and O'Callie for publicly requesting an independent audit. The request of an audit is sound and logical. Mr. Montez, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Montez given reason, his given reason is, rather than a shotgun approach to the reduction list, an audit will provide a more accurate starting point to begin to address the district's deficit, rather than making the reductions based on speculated projections. Mrs. O'Callie's given reason, an audit will provide, knowing where we actually stand financially, the audit will make sense as to where we go from here. Regarding the district's proposed reductions, in a recent past board meeting, it was stated by a school board member, this happens all the time, and that most employees on the list are later called back. In spite of the reasons as to why we are facing such a financial crisis at this time, this should be a red flag for operating in such a manner. It fragments the working team by causing finger pointing, negatively impacting working morale, and encouraging isolation amongst the employees. The overall net results are negative to the district's operations, and ultimately yielding a financial loss for the district. It also presents a very unhealthy and stressful work environment for all employees within our district. Therefore, taking the risk of having an audit would be a wise investment to demonstrate good faith in all employees of the Rialto Unified School District. It would be the first responsible step in resolving the district's financial deficit. The district's most important infrastructure resource is all of its employees, having a unified working team. Thank you.
Dr. Seaborn, President Ayala, school board members, cabinet members, and audience. Thank you, everybody in blue. I love you. Item J 4.1 is an extreme list that promises to drain the district of needed student services and puts a huge dent in the maintenance and progression of technology, building repairs and services that are done for the good and safety of students. While we acknowledge that things have been bleak, let me remind you that there is now a light at the end of the tunnel. Let's be proud that we survived the storm. Please remember, we are still in positive certification. We passed Prop 30 because of CSEA and REA. We have survived the devastating cuts from the past. There are rumors that the classified staff haven't sacrificed. In truth, classified staff have had drastic calendar cuts, starting in 2008, 2009, in the fiscal year. We've frozen step and column increases when others have given nothing, and we've suffered eliminations of past positions that still have an impact, a negative impact on student services, their education, and their safety. If the Board of Education adopts this resolution, what do you think these additional cuts will do for the students, staff, and community of Rialto? Thank you.
Mr. Ayala.
That is it. That concludes our public hearing. We're moving on to public information and correspondence. As a reminder, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, April 10th, 2013, at 7 o'clock PM at Morgan Elementary School, 1571 North Sycamore Avenue, Rialto. Consent Calendar, Action Section. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the Board of Education to be routine, will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board considers the motion unless members of the board, the administrative staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the Consent Calendar. At this time, do we have a motion to accept E through I?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Page five. Okay. That's it. It takes care of everything there. Okay, discussion action items. Okay, and we we need to look at J 5, but we also have J 1, 2, 3, and 4. So we approve those because we're just going to discuss J 5. At this time, would
No, 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 we're not going to J. E through I.
E through I. Let me take a look here. Page 2.
We just approved through I.
E through I is what we just approved.
We just did E through I.
Yeah, we just did E through I. So we're moving on to J.
J.
Discussion action items. Discussion action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed.
Could I just put a reminder that I did discover that each discussion action item is supposed to be read aloud and voted on individually?
And
Can we go through J 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 separately?
Okay, now, we haven't done that in the past, and I guess we need legal advice on this.
The problem is, for those who do not have access to an agenda, they have no idea what we're voting on. And these are discussion action items. They're not consent calendar items. They're not supposed to be voted on all at once.
Routine.
Let's have a discussion on this. We've done it in the past. I mean, I guess you could consider it an omnibus method of voting. We decided that J 5 was an issue, so we're going to do that separately. I don't see why we can't do 1, 2, and 3, 4 in one grouping, and
Okay, well, I was at a conference and asked the presenters about, it was a session on the Brown Act, and they said, "Every discussion action item is to be read aloud individually and voted on individually."
I'd like to discuss these items. If that's okay, Board President and Board Clerk.
Well, you know, we get, we start discussing every item, pretty soon we're here till 10 or 12 o'clock at night, and that's frankly not something I want to do.
Well, I think it's more important than the time that we spend. More important is the issues and the importance of the decisions that we have to vote on. Me personally, I don't care if we go till 3:00 in the morning, as long as we make informed and as long as we discuss important items. But that's just me personally. I'm not trying to beat anybody else's time or race for the quickest board meeting. But I just would like, if it's okay, I would like to request that we vote separately for these five items. There's not very much other stuff on the agenda. I think we're doing pretty good on time.
As someone who has attended board meetings for the past 30 years on and off, it's always been done the way I said it's supposed to be done until recently.
Okay, Point of Order. Mr. Martinez?
No.
Edgar, Point of Order?
Yeah, unless somebody has other information, we have a board member, Ms. Callie, who has testified already that she attended a workshop for training for board members, which are very, very instrumental and very important to help us do our jobs better. And I don't have, I believe it. I don't have any information to counter that, and I don't know if anybody else does, but I don't see a problem with doing it that way.
I would recommend, we've read it ahead of time. If you want to vote on one separately, two, but if you think there's going to be a problem, but if you don't see a problem there
Well, the idea is to make it clear to the public. Not everybody has an agenda in front of them, and when we just put them all together, they have no idea what we are approving or not approving.
I would like to get legal counsel on this one.
Agreed.
Before we go any farther on this. So my recommendation is we vote as we have in the past, as one action item, as omnibus method for 1, 2, 3, 4. We'll come back after legal advice, and then we decided that we were going to vote on J 5 separately, and we're going to get our members in the audience home at a reasonable time instead of 2:00 in the morning, or 10:00, or 12:00 o'clock.
That was my one question, and it's really come up for some time now. When can we release staff? Because if we do start going till 10, 11, 12, staff has to report rather early.
I'd like to call Point of Order again.
I'm asking the President.
That is a reasonable
But he did call Point.
We have Point of Order. Mr. Montez?
With all due respect, it's clear in black and white. It says, "Discussion action items J. Discussion action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed."
I thought we did that. J 5.
And J 4.
It says items. J 1, I'd like J 1.
We can do J 4, and we can do J 5.
I'd like J 1. I would like to discuss J 1.
Okay, we can do J 1, and we'll do J 4, and we'll do J 5, and then we'll vote on 2 and 3
Together.
Together.
I still don't have an answer when we can release staff, you know, when we do get late. If we, you know, not tonight, but in the future. I mean
Well, perhaps we could take that up in closed session rather than keep everybody here.
Okay, those of you who are out in the audience right now, we will take that up in closed session so that if we go into discussion action items beyond a certain time, that, you know, we know you have a long day yourselves. You have to get up and get up and come back to work, and we want to give you that opportunity to go home to your families. So, okay, let's go ahead and go and start with J 1, open up with discussions. We're in agreement, correct? We're going to go, we're going to vote on J 1, J 4, and J 5 separately, and then 2 and 3 we'll do together.
Would you like to do those first, 2 and 3?
Okay, good. All right. Do we have a motion to accept J 2 and J 3?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motions carried.
I would like to point something out to the public, and since there was a request from one of our associations in particular about running an audit, typical audits that I'm familiar with run anywhere, the quick ones, $7,000 to $10,000. The one that we just voted on, a maximum cost of $52,000 per year, including expenses with $44,000 to be paid from the general fund where most of these positions come from, and $8,000 to be paid from Fund 21 General Geo Bonds. Just so you know the validity of us wanting to know the price of item J 5.
Mr. Islam, could you explain to the board and to the public the difference between this annual audit that we've been using from these services, we've been using from Vav, Vavrenic, Trine Day &amp; Co. Could you explain the difference on how an audit of this type is just getting the actuals and getting
Point of Order. I thought we were going to go on J 1 and then go to 4 and 5, and we voted on 2 and 3.
And he's commenting after we voted on the item.
So it's been voted on. We can't really take action. I'm just reading for those who don't have an agenda.
We're going to get back to J 5.
Yeah, that's fine. I just like to make my point. This type of audit is an audit that's required by the state annually. It's not the same.
Point of Order. We need to move on to J 1. We already agreed that we're going to go to J 1, and then we'll move down to 4, and then we're going to move to 5. If we start bouncing back and forth, then this audience here is going to get confused. So J 1, please. Do we have some comments on J 1?
We have to do a motion and a second for the rest of them.
Okay.
For 2 and, I'm sorry, 1 and 4.
1 and 4. Well, we're going to do them separately. So do we have a motion to accept J 1?
So moved.
Okay, we have a first. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Or do we have discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion.
This item, do you want to read it? Or would you like me to do so?
Go ahead, Mr. Montez.
Thank you. The item is to adopt the Resolution Number 12-13-58 to enable participation in the California School Cash Reserve Program sponsored by the California School Boards Association Finance Corporation. Our district is not obligated to participate as a result of a resolution adoption. The resolution simply delegates to the administration the right to decide on participation prior to the time of tran issuance. Now, we, the board was all provided with additional information regarding the full details of this resolution and was given a report. This would authorize staff, the district, for a maximum amount of borrowing of $65 million for a maximum amount of borrowing of $65 million, possibly to be borrowed for the fiscal year 2013, 2014, and the issuance and sale of one or more series of 2013, 2014 tax and revenue anticipation notes. Therefore, in participation in the California School Cash Reserve Program and requesting the Board of Supervisors of the county to issue and sell said series of notes. So my discussion...